The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the work session to order. We're joined at the table, six board members are present, Celestine Jeffries is excused. We also have multiple members of the cabinet and Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent to my left, and Sandy Heller, our board secretary. We're also joined by Lokeen Chang from Preville, who's the Inter-City Student Council President, and Sam Hiesiker from West will be joining us shortly, I believe. First, we'll begin with our open forum. This is a chance for members of the community to speak before the board about any topic of concern to them. I don't have any forums filled out in front of me, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move on to our Teaching and Learning Work Session, which will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have a discussion item, and it's going to be the mathematics content and course essential documents, and we'll have Mark Smith facilitating that discussion.
Great, thank you. We'll call to the table some of our team here that worked on this. Mike Fries and Nancy Chartier will introduce our teacher leaders, our curriculum coordinators here in just a little bit. Do we have enough room? Good time. So, just a matter of context and setting for the public, we're excited to be here this evening, mostly because it provides us a stepping off point for the work that we've been doing in the Teaching and Learning Department around building a guaranteed and viable curriculum, quite honestly. So this is a signal that we're in the step, we're stepping in the right direction for our students and our staff. We're bringing to you for approval the mathematics curriculum and essential documents for grades PK through eight, algebra, geometry, and algebra II. We've attempted to communicate the need for our curriculum renewal process in a board retreat previously, and also in a work session previously as well. It's our hope that this background will provide you the context so that when you see the documents this evening, that you better understand those documents as well. As I mentioned before, we have four people that will be presenting tonight. Mike Fries is the Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary. Nancy Chartier is the Director of Teaching and Learning for Elementary. And both Lisa Green and Lisa Johnson are teacher leaders, our curriculum coordinators, that help shepherd this work as well. So, just as a reminder at the conclusion of this, we'll be asking the governance request to approve these documents and move those forward for approval. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mike Fries at this point.
Good evening, everyone. As a setting of context, as Mark indicated, we have had some conversation running with the school board in recent months, over the past year or two, around the process by which we are looking at curriculum renewal or refreshing. We believe that this is a recommitment to the intent of our backwards design philosophy around curriculum development, whereas you outline what students need and know and be able to do, and then you make sure that the documents, the resources that you select to support, the curriculum documents, all kind of fall in line with that. We have the philosophy that a curriculum should be guaranteed viable, that guaranteed means that what is taught is what is assessed, and viable means doable. And we also believe in the concept of being able to teach for understanding, not just teaching to say that you covered it, you got from here to there very quickly, you covered it. It's really teaching for understanding, which means your assessment practices must reflect that, and your curriculum documents must also reflect that. In looking back at the archives, if you will, it's our understanding that back in 2008, we made the transition from being an integrated mathematics program at the secondary level to the more classical algebra, geometry, algebra II at the high school level. And that was when the curriculum was brought forward, kind of as a K-12, if you will, transition. And then in 2010, the Common Core was adopted, and we spent these last few years, as indicated in the memo that we shared with you, transitioning through the Common Core, or to the Common Core, rather, so that not only are we Common Core aligned, but really Common Core based in terms of the standards that are taught within our math curriculum. That brought the need to, out of our department, to make sure that our documents were all in alignment throughout the system, pre-K through algebra II, in a common and accessible format for all pertinent stakeholders, and so we bring those documents to you this evening. Nancy will talk for just a minute about the, what the shifts in the Common Core have meant for us in terms of our curriculum process, and then both Lisas will outline, not only the process by which these documents were created, but also what the attachments, the appendices are for you for your considerations part of this work as well.
As part of our process, we embrace three major shifts in the mathematics in the Common Core. That first being the greater focus on fewer topics, which helps us then to build a stronger foundation. If you will, please refer to the slide that we have. You'll see the, I want to say, vertical alignment stating that you can pull out the actual growth and progression as we go across the grade levels. Counting card and cardinality is only addressed at kindergarten, but you'll see that numbers and operation in base ten is really the foundation for which the ratios and proportionality and relationships and so on and so forth build on at the secondary level. The other piece that the same slide brings forth for us is the coherence and the linking of the topics, that thinking across all of those grade levels. Knowing that they are all interconnected, those concepts are interconnected, and coherent progression from grade level to grade level. And the third major shift that we focused and embraced is actually the rigor. And the rigor comes in the depth of understanding, the conceptual understanding, procedural skills, fluency, and the application piece. So that those would be the three major shifts that we looked for while we were developing our new documents or our new written curriculum. And now I'll turn it over to Lisa Green, who facilitated our elementary pre-K five curriculum reading process.
Okay, the purpose of screening the documents was to ensure that teachers understood specifically what students needed to know and be able to do. We had teams of four to seven teachers from each grade level from a variety of schools. We had bilingual representation in the classrooms from every single grade level team, and those teachers were the grade level experts. So when we did third grade, there were only third grade teachers around the table working on those third grade skills and the standards. We unpacked the Common Core State Standards at each grade level to answer the question, what does this statement mean so that students will know and be able to do, and ensure that that description that we created was helpful and specific to students and parents and teachers. We began with the 4K, and we worked our way up to grade five to ensure that we understood the progression of the skill. So we wanted to start at that foundational level. Because 4K does not have Common Core State Standards, we took the kindergarten standards, kind of peeled them back, and looked at the progression of skills that they needed to get into kindergarten and be successful in kindergarten. We built our evidence outcomes by looking at the skills necessary to be successful in kindergarten. We also referenced the Wisconsin Early Learning Standards and the Teaching Strategies Goal that's used in our 4K program. We created 3K and a 4K curriculum. The course documents are split into six pieces, and I think you have a, I have a copy of those. The course description was created using paraphrased language, and it defines the three or four critical areas and focus areas of each grade level or each course. The topics at a glance are the major clusters that each grade level will be reported out to parents on the trimester report card. So those are specifically the major clusters that are important at each grade level. The assessments, both formative and summative assessments, have been identified for each course. The standards for mathematical practice are behaviors that describe ways in which students develop mathematical mindset, and it's how they see math and the world around them. Those are also listed on our documents. The grade level expectations were created by analyzing the standards of each domain or content area and condensing it to specifically state what students need to know and be able to do to show that they're proficient in that standard. So when we unpacked them, we really got specific and gave examples as to what those grade level expectations were. And then we also have instructional strategies listed that have been identified at each grade level, and those are intended to not be an all-inclusive list, but basically the best practice strategies adopted by the district and are used by teachers. The process was not only a curriculum writing process, but it was also very, kind of a professional learning that was embedded. The teachers left with a much greater, much deeper understanding of what it was that they needed to make sure that their students knew and were able to do. The feedback was tremendous with the teachers leaving with that deeper understanding. It's our hope that they'll take that process and share that with their colleagues, because it was so powerful that they would leave and understand what they really needed to know, that they knew their standards really well.
Lisa, before you go, Lori, could you pull up on the screen just the appendix A or B, so that we can have that for reference? Thank you.
We know we'll be going to appendix B, Mr. Smith.
Appendix B.
Appendix B. We'll be going to appendix B because we're moving to secondary.
So at the secondary level, we went through a very similar process in which we asked ourselves, what do we want our students to know and be able to do for each of our courses? As with most standards, they're written in a way that leads, that is left up to some interpretation, and so we utilized in the unpacking process to help us really interpret and gain consensus of what each standard meant, and identifying the learning targets for each standard. In addition to using Bloom's taxonomy to identify rigor level, we utilized resources from multiple states who had already gone through that unpacking process to help us identify how they had unpacked them. One of the goals with this process was to have the teachers gain a deep understanding of the standards. Additionally, we included sample problems in the evidence outcome section so that they could see what it really looked like in terms of, in math problem words. Gaining clarity around the standards and student learning targets is the first step for us in delivering a guaranteed curriculum. The mathematical standards are banded through eighth grade, but in the conceptual categories for high school. So in high school, we had to go through an extra step. We used appendix A from the Common Core documents as a guideline to determine which course, which standard would be in which course at the high school level. And the course descriptions and overview also came from that appendix A to help us guide what an algebra course, geometry, and algebra II course would look like. On each of our teams, we tried to include a member from each secondary school, if possible, so that they can go back to each building, have the background of going through the process with working with our collaborative teams.
So in summary, we're very pleased to present to you for consideration what we're considering to be guaranteed viable curriculum documents that spell out what kids need to know and be able to do, in conjunction with, we believe, strong references to our permission statement as a district around college career, community readiness expectations in the area of mathematics as based upon standards outlined by the Common Core State Standards for Mathematics. Representing pre-K all the way through algebra II.
Any questions?
Questions or comments? Brenda?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Tie this in the Common Core for me, please. Tie this in the Common Core for me, please.
Well, the Common Core is, please correct me if I don't capture the essence of your question, but the Common Core State Standards, multi-state initiative, Wisconsin adopted the standards, our district adopted the standards, but the standards are just kind of, I guess the analogy of a building code that you have to adhere to when you develop your local documents, or using the analogy, the building code would be the standards, and the house and the blueprint that you build, that's the local decision. And at the local level, we needed to make sure our teachers understand the Common Core State Standards, because those are the expectations of our state and our district, but the local curriculum that we developed around it is more than just the standards. That is just a skeleton of, kind of really the floor of what students need to know and be able to do.
So what we have here in math goes beyond the standards in Common Core?
We outlined a grade level expectation based on the Common Core, but as, as the teams of teachers interpreted what the standard and grade level expectations meant in their estimation through their unpacking of the standards.
So if our students successfully go through this curriculum, they will meet the Common Core standards hands down? Thank you.
And we're, you know, we're excited about the process that we engage in. Obviously, the result is a guaranteed viable curriculum with resources and templates where folks can go to. Think about a new teacher coming into the district and being able to access this document. It's there, it's present for them versus searching out, where do I go to? But it's also the process that teachers go through, and our goal is to replicate that process. So we had a smaller representative team work on this, and now we're creating that momentum to really go back at the building level, and as they work in teams, algebra II teams or geometry teams, they're doing that same level of work so that they see the ownership, and it can be a transformative process for all of our teachers in the district as well.
Brenda? And as I recall, and we've talked about this before, the, we're not adopting any new big curriculums. We're going to use curricula, I should say. We're going to use the, what we have in place and use that as resources to be able to meet the curriculum, and then continue to add resources as we, as we find them, and then to piggyback on that, so if you can elaborate a little bit on that, but then also elaborate on what we're providing for teachers, whether it be resources or professional development, to be able to help those students who don't naturally meet these standards with the normal classroom instruction, what they, what they will have to help all of our students meet those standards.
Thank you. First, for pre-K five, grade five, we will not be seeking a new adoption of resource materials. However, after going through this process, we know that we will be adding supplemental materials to our current existing materials. So we will not be coming forward with a budget for resources pre-K five. To your second question, how are we helping teachers to support students who don't immediately meet the standards? The way the content essential documents are written, they're written so that teachers can scaffold the students' learning by teaching to not only their grade level expectation, but also the grade level expectation prior and expected outcomes that maybe were not mastered or transferred from that previous grade. We are also in the process of training teachers in advantage of math recovery, and also our fourteen, I'm sorry, sixteen math interventionists are going through math recovery training at this particular time, in which they, starting next year, will be able to provide our teachers in-depth professional development around numeracy. And also, our math content lead, which Lisa leads those meetings, we work closely on the differentiated instruction of mathematics and guided mathematics groups. So it's a process. As we rate our interdisciplinary units of study, we will have provided for our children even greater opportunity now for them to apply their math practices, not just in math, but across multiple content areas, and that is what the Common Core, the spirit of the Common Core calls for. So that's a summary of our process of pre-K five.
At the secondary level, it's important to us, as we develop these, these particular sets of documents, that they, they didn't ignore the hard work that folks have done these past three years as we've made the transition, because you know that there were a number of teams working really hard, trying to get modules or units of study and individual lessons created. Those remain accessible to folks to incorporate. These CEDs or content or course essential documents are slightly bigger picture than that, and call it the bigger picture kind of benchmarks along the way, and teachers are able to continue utilizing some of those other teacher-generated and additional documents that they've created along the way, as well as open source resources that they found. With regards to the formally purchased resource piece, as you, as you know, you approved an adoption for this year in middle school, six, seven, and eight, as well as algebra II, and then algebra and geometry been kind of a three-month field test, if you will. We're in the process of getting feedback from folks around that right now. We anticipate being able to provide an update and/or make a recommendation or request for governance later this winter based on that feedback. I think Wednesday we have another session for the feedback. Yeah, so we're in the middle of getting that feedback right now from folks, so.
All right, thanks. Andrew?
Yes, couple of things. First of all, can you just help me understand the sequence in, starting in sixth grade? Now someone might take, a student may take sixth grade math, and then math II, and then math III, and then as a ninth grader, algebra I, a tenth grader, geometry XI. Or they might take sixth grade math and then accelerated VII, and then eighth grade algebra?
Yep.
And then would they then skip algebra I and do geometry?
Yes.
Okay. So, I remember, you know, way, well, not way back in the day, but I remember eight or nine years ago, if I remember right.
It's pretty soon as it used to.
You, so there's some differences. It used to be, if I remember right, though, the, the eighth graders would basically just be taking the ninth grade algebra class and then just going into geometry as a tenth grader. What's, what's different?
Well, with the way that the Common Core in appendix A broke up the standards, and what they do is in accelerated VII, they cover all of the seventh grade standards, and they cover part of the eighth grade standards, and then in an eighth grade algebra course, they cover the rest of the eighth grade standards with all the algebra standards, which is different from the way we had traditionally done it. So that's a little bit of a difference now with Common Core, just how they broke up the standards. And we decided to keep it the same as appendix A, just as kids transfer in and out to keep that consistency.
So you could almost call accelerated VII, VII VIII, and eighth grade math, VIII IX, kind of?
Yep.
Okay, so, so there's different pathways then for kids who are going to move along a little, a little bit faster without necessarily having to jump entire years, though that could be looked at if a student was ready. And then along those same lines, this results from, actually a conversation I had last week with a friend of mine from a different state, the end result of which was my apologizing on behalf of the Institution of Public Education for what happened in that other state. The situation of a gifted student with, in that other state was just, and that district was just not offered anything, but, but we're just bored, and I know we don't, we don't do that here, but could you just, that conversation had prompted me to just ask a little bit more about what are some things we do for differentiation for, you know, the third, third or fourth grader who's maybe well past that in math, but maybe isn't choosing to choice into a different program, but we don't want him to be bored in third and fourth? How do we, what do we do there?
Well, we first develop a personalized education plan so that we can have better tracking of the student and measurable outcomes. And there are students who actually are accelerated to the next grade level, especially students who families have chosen not to have the child partake in our gifted and talented program offsite, they want them to remain in their home school. So there are children that are accelerated. There are also enrichment activities that the student, as part of the workshop model, shall I say, or the, the small group instruction. It's not just for children who are struggling, but it's also for children who are accelerated, so that they don't just get more of the same, they actually get a far more challenging problem that's related to the same concepts at a much deeper, shall I say, intensity. So in the classroom themselves, in the regular education classroom, they are differentiated. They also meet and could meet with our gifted program support right at their school site, or again, the other option would be that they would attend our CAVI for the area of mathematics in which, the area in which they're gifted. It totally depends on the plan that's developed by the parent, the school, and the other personnel, relevant personnel.
Okay, but even, even more informally, it sounds like you're also saying that maybe a kid just has a particularly good grasp of one, one topic, but isn't ready to jump a year ahead in math, even still, the small group activities, they may, you may get four kids together with a more challenging, because they're ready for it, at the same time, others might be doing some refreshing and...
And this is the beautiful part of the Common Core State Standards, is that they're interconnected across content areas. So you'll see teachers bringing in science and the engineering pathways right into the mathematics. So they may not even realize they're doing mathematics, but they are, but through a science lens. So there's another opportunity for students to expand and to enrich right within the differentiated classroom.
Okay. And then just my last question is this, what we're seeing tonight stops at algebra II then, where, what happens with the more advanced, the higher levels?
We've been having conversations around, okay, so we've worked our way through the Common Core expectations in general, and so how do we now ensure that as we complete this transition, that we have viable pathways into the pre-calculus, the calculus, the AP stats, those types of things? And so, but with the advanced placement of course, they spell out what a course looks like, so our approach to that curriculum process has been a little bit different. We've been having conversations with our teachers around getting that pre-calculus set of documents also spelled out, and making sure that our pathway does include that. That's in the still-to-come piece.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, if I could just follow up on Andrew's second question, as I'm looking at the documents, they seem really seamless, and it seems for a student who starts in pre-K and goes through and meets expectations at all grade levels, that there'll be a high likelihood of success. What do we in the district do for children who transfer in with deficiencies? Say a sixth grader who isn't, you know, equipped to start at the same, you know, starting point? What are the flexibilities that we, we have in the district?
I'm sure Mike and Nancy are probably way more intelligent in this. I know enough just to be dangerous, so I think I can take a shot at it. I think that one of the first things we have to start with, Mary, quite honestly, is a solid assessment of what the students know, and, and really get anchored in that piece so that we can understand where their opportunities are from an enrichment standpoint, or where we need to do necessary intervention to bring them up to speed. And I think that's one of the things from a secondary perspective that we can do a better job at initially, especially for our students that are coming in new to us. Outside of a student with an IEP, we likely don't do an initial assessment to find out where they are relative to math and literacy. Our teachers are really trained and skilled to catch them up as best they can, but that's where we would bring in to play a school-wide approach of response to intervention, of really responding to a student's needs and trying to get them skill up sooner than waiting for a six-week grading report to come out, or semester grades to come out, because sometimes that's too far, too long the way. So, if you guys want to...
I just wanted to add that the Common Core State Standards have been adopted by many states, so depending on which state that child would come from, they've already been exposed to the same set of standards that our children in Green Bay would be exposed to. The other component would be, as far as assessment, we do screen all of our students using the STAR assessment, the screener, and so to bring them in, if we had, if the records did not come along with them, it would be nothing to provide that screen for that child to tell us and give us, you know, get us in the ballpark of where we need to go next. And then more diagnostic assessment might be needed to know exactly what the next teachable component would be.
And down the road, that's the beauty of Common Core.
And that is the beauty of the Common Core.
Thank you. Sam?
I was just wondering, like, what effect would it have on students with an IEP? So like, as far as like test-taking environments, or like what they're being taught? Like, how would that affect disabled students?
For the, for the vast, vast, vast majority of students, the Common Core State Standards apply to all of them, and we work through the IEP process, and Ms. Henderson may choose to elaborate on this also, but the IEP process would be one of the ways in which we can make sure that that student is still provided an opportunity to demonstrate that's a grade level expectation.
And then we also know that the special education has the essential documents that are aligned to the Common Core State Standards, perfectly aligned with the Common Core State Standards that are developmentally appropriate, but that doesn't excuse the fact that all children should have accessibility to their grade level expectations. Our particular documents that we've prepared allow for teachers to write more specific goal, developmentally appropriately... appropriate goals towards the grade level expectation. They can be used as resources as well as with the essential elements.
No, and they did, the team developed these essential documents with the support of the special education team, so they had membership represented, representative there. You'll help also.
That is correct.
I think, yeah, I think it's important to, to really accentuate that, that we, we believe that our teachers are highly skilled and can, can bring all kids to those grade level expectations. How we do that, that's both art and science, that we work so deliberately to master. But it's important that, you know, in our district, all be involved, and how we support our kids to that point is the work that our teachers do daily, and we're proud of that.
Andrew, did you have your hand up again?
I did, but it was actually answered as part of that last question.
Chris?
Just something that perhaps has changed in the equation, which you didn't, I believe you touched on. It's always difficult when youngsters come from other districts. Does the information come with them, or do you have to send away from it? Will it get there in a couple of days, a week, a couple of months? So, in trying to ascertain where a youngster is, if you have good documentation, some parents are, understand that and very good about bringing things with them. I have found there are some districts that don't like to release things to parents, that you have to send to them. All that takes time, so you can lose for some youngsters a week to a month plus in trying to figure out where they are. And at least at the high school level, it's difficult, as you're trying to put them in the correct classes for credit. So, that's just another issue that has to be, has to be worked with.
I have a quick question. On those standards and curriculum, you said it went up to eleventh grade, right? Like, algebra two, something like that? Would these standards overlap what's being tested on, like standardized tests, such as ACT or SAT?
Excellent question. Wisconsin has adopted a hybrid model where it's going with the assessments based from the Smart Val's assessment consortium, it's going to be called the Badger Exam for grades three through eight. And at the high school level, they adopted the ACT suite of exams. And ACT is currently in the process of doing a rewrite and an update. So, this first year, and I'm not sure if, I don't recall the exact date, and I don't believe it's next year, I think it's the year after, they'll have like a fully Common Core-based, that's kind of what they've been talking about, the course timelines sometimes change. But if you go on the ACT website, you can see a cross-reference of what percent of ACT topics are Common Core-aligned. But it will, this year, and again, I believe next year, it'll still be based on the copy of what ACT has historically been, as the existing exam. But our standards has been, if you, if you can master your grade level expectations, it's not what you know, what you can be able to do, you'll do just fine on an ACT at the high school level, so.
The opportunity in search chief, this next board meeting will be around the ACT test suite, so we'll be able to give you all that information as well.
Nice segue. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your work, and for the people who aren't here that stood behind and are part of this as well. The piece that I look at is, okay, then what? Okay, and how will we know that this is meeting the needs of the teachers, and more importantly, the needs of our students in terms of their learning, as we move forward with these course documents?
I think you're absolutely right. I mean, it's one thing to create documents, call them guaranteed viable, and say, we're done. But, of course, it's not part of it. It's really a part of a continuous program process that is, this is a curriculum process that is intended to be living, that is intended to be annually, we've talked to you about the concept of jurying documents, kind of asking for input and feedback from folks that are using the documents, that any staple are really, that's one piece. Another piece is the concept of job-invented professional development. How does that look and play out in our buildings as collaborative teams who teach the same subject? Is there algebra teachers who are teaching algebra? How are they dialoguing around, preparing students for benchmark assessments, for common assessments that they're developing at the building level to determine to what extent have youngsters already mastered or not quite mastered the material, and how are they responding and adjusting their instruction to that? That's how it's going to be kept living, and give us the input as to how close are we on the market this first time around. You know, the beauty of it is that these are teacher-developed, our teacher developed this, and they'll continue to refine and polish it as we go, until we have new standards at some point down the road, that we will then do a full, you know, refresher here. That's my stance on it, and use this.
I totally agree, Mary. And I think it's important, not only common formative assessments, that the district adopt meaningful assessments that truly measure what it is we want children to know and be able to do, that do align with our state assessments. And we are in the process of doing that. I know Lisa had mentioned at the elementary level, we have, they have, there's no moles in my pocket, they have, teachers have developed common benchmark assessments, so that at every trimester, they will have benchmark assessments, and then in between the trimesters would be where the teachers would be developing their formative assessments, to know that whether or not we are aligned with our benchmark assessment, which is aligned with W K C E, or soon to be Badger. So, all of our assessments must align, but we, as we mentioned today, it shouldn't be a surprise. Our results on our state assessment should not be a surprise, that our assessments along the way should be a predictor of student success during the learning process.
Lisa Green, Lisa Johnson had made the comment that you were glad that there were representatives from all of the secondary schools. Is that true of the elementary schools as well?
We didn't have representation from every single school, but we did have, because we had teams of four to seven, and we have so many elementary schools. But I think most schools have representative on some grade level. We made sure that we had a cross variety, and we had bilingual representation as well.
Because you had made the comment that you're hoping that those teachers will then go back into their schools and kind of spread the word. Are we relying on the math interventionists to do this as well, or?
Actually, it's part of our rollout for, after the curriculum will be adopted, our content leads will all be trained in depth on how to use the documents, as well as to identify draft standards, that they actually support teachers back at their individual sites, and also to use the documents to write their own independent units or interdisciplinary units, especially in mathematics. But we get, we can use math everywhere, so we can apply it across content areas. So, we will be tapping our content specialists, as well as our curriculum coordinators, and our math interventionists, absolutely. Our math interventionists will be a part of supporting, I would say, more around the instruction than the curriculum pieces back at each of the individual sites.
I was finished till we started talking about assessment. There certainly is a movement, not necessarily locally, but across the country, concerned about Common Core and what's going on education with youngsters being overly tested, or examined, or whatnot. And I don't expect you to answer this right now, because you probably have to go back to quantify it. With what we're doing now, will youngsters be evaluated the same, or less than what we have been doing in the past?
That's a good question, Dr. Weyer. And I think it would be wise for us to really look at that systematically, and provide you a more comprehensive answer to that, because it really is a complex question, and one that we engage in all the time. How much assessment is needed to inform practice, so that teachers can make the appropriate moves in the classroom to meet the needs of the kids? And at what point is assessment too much, it interferes with your instructional practices as well? Our goal is that it's a balanced assessment system that we've created. That's, that's the goal.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, well, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and we'll move this forward to the coordinator.
All right.
It wraps our discussion items, if that concludes.
All right, thank you, Katie. Next, we have our organizational support work session. That'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, for organizational support discussion items, we have no discussion items under business and finance. Under human resources, then, we will introduce some handbook updates.
Before you, is a recommended change to employee handbook language. This change relates to how we...
Can you move the mic for our viewing audience?
I'll start over. Before you, you have a recommended change to the employee handbook, which relates to employment, and specifically, it relates to the timing and how we select employees. We've now had two, excuse me, three cycles of hiring employees, and most of the hiring, as you know, occurs in the, right after the first of the year, starts with looking at the staffing needs. And then it starts in earnest around February, March, and then April and May. And the change that we're recommending really basically comes down to posting open positions internally and externally at the same time, using WeCan, which is the online product that we use, and allowing our leaders to select the candidate after interviews, the candidate who they feel best matches the qualifications for the position. We're recommending this because we found that we are not keeping up with our neighboring districts in terms of our timing of our hiring, and we believe we're looking for candidates to other districts. Also, this places more responsibility and accountability on the supervisors and principals who are selecting candidates, because they are being held now, the principals, 50% of their evaluation relates to their school data. And, and so, the people who they select are, it's very important for them to be able to select those who they feel best match the needs of the position. What this means is that we would be eliminating the language in two sections of the handbook, under the educator, non-supervisory employee section, which is essentially the teacher section. And then, the R3 is the non-attempt, non-supervatory section, which is the support staff. And we would create language which you have before you, under the title of open positions. And it basically allows the district to employ and select and retain the best candidates to fill open positions. And basically, it says what I just said, we would post jobs on WeCan concurrently, internally and externally. And then our supervisors and managers and principals would screen internal candidates and external candidates, and select those who they feel they would like to bring in for an interview. The selection is based on a job description, and we've been working really diligently to keep our job descriptions up to date, and to make sure that when we have new positions or changes in positions, we keep our job descriptions up to date, because that's essentially the back, I call it the back one of HR. That's what jobs are, the job description. We would also, it's important to note that when there's any reduction in force, we would be using the same process we've used before, and that would be based on seniority. And just like we did last year, anytime there's a shift in the number of students enrolled that affects an employee, a teacher, any employee actually, we make sure that that employee has a position before we would go to the posting process. So, we want to make sure that all of our employees retain a position that they're suitable for. So, with that, I, we've messaged this out to all of our unions, all of our groups, so they know that this is coming. They've had a chance to ask questions and seek clarification. And with that, I would just, you know, entertain any questions that you might have.
All right, questions?
I believe, obviously, you're hopeful with this, that they, that we expedite the whole process, we might be a little bit more nimble and hire a little bit quicker before viable candidates, good candidates are taken elsewhere.
That, I think that would be, that would be, it's one of the most significant reasons for changing, because we know that all of the other districts are out in the market earlier than we are, and the process that we have is cumbersome, and our principals have given us some feedback about that. So, I think we would be able to hire much quicker. What I could envision is that teams of principals would come together and probably look at some of the external candidates, and interview them, even before we might have specific schools available, and just, we talked about hiring pools of candidates to be placed. Many of the new graduates, the feedback that I received, would be able to accept a position to be placed, because they understand that the needs of a large district mean that they might, you know, might not be able to tell them the school they'd be working in. But if they were an elementary teacher, and we could hire them, and guarantee them an elementary placement, I think, I think that would work. And other experienced principals have told me that, that other districts have done something similar.
Okay. Brenna?
Another, I would, is another benefit to changing the system, that we would have fewer hires at the end of August, right before school's starting to?
Absolutely. We would, I think that we would be much more likely to get all of our positions filled earlier. And at the end of August, we would still be doing some hiring based on shifting enrollments. And we did have about, oh, maybe five or six late resignations. And those, I would anticipate, might continue, because they were things beyond our control. But we would be hiring much, much of them, I believe.
Michelle?
And Jean, wouldn't it be also, then, any open position would be open to any internal employee that was qualified as well, not just some?
Yes.
Would be open to any employee?
Yes. Because it's, it's a, that's good to note, Michelle, because in the support staff area, we have substitutes who are not considered internal. They're employees of ours, and they substitute, but we go through the bargaining unit first, and the principals cannot interview substitutes until they have looked and screened and interviewed the members of the bargaining unit. And something, sometimes that takes, that takes, well, it always takes extra time. And so, some of our very good subs would be able to get interviewed right away.
And the same, though, would hold true if a teacher
Yes.
may be relatively new.
Yes. LTEs, for example.
So, they would have an opportunity to be in the pool of swap.
That's right. Over the years, I've, over the years, I've had to tell LTEs, no, no, you can apply, but no, you won't get to get an interview yet, and, you know, but when can I? Well, and it was difficult, because I knew they wanted to stay, but they also wanted a job. And they were also getting called by other districts. So, it was very difficult.
Jean, what, if any, impact will this change have on the staffing and some of our specialized and customized programs?
I think that we will be able to bring external candidates who are screened in, in and interview at the same time as any of the current employees. So, it will just allow the principals and anybody who hires for specialized areas to look at the candidates right away.
Larger pool.
Larger pool, right away.
I can share a specific example. Tech Ed is, is one at the secondary level that is a hard-to-fill position. And by allowing us this opportunity, not only will we go out sooner, but we will be able to go out externally right away, and not have to, and not have to wait for the internal movement to then be able to proceed. So, that's, it's a hard-to-fill position, it's something that we've been continuously working on, but that's, that's an example, a good example of when we need to hit the market right away, that that's an important one to, to call out and to go after.
Yeah, I would agree. And in addition, I think in, in special education, Claudia generally has a sense that she's going to need to hire some special education teachers, so now she can start interviewing right away. And if a person externally is a good candidate, she can make an offer with a to-be-placed, and not wait until all of the internal movement is shifted around. Anything else, Claudia, that would affect your thoughts?
Bilingual special ed, which is very hard to find.
Anything else? I'll call on myself for a couple of things here. So, what's, what's really happening here, then, is that anytime there's an open position, this is essentially... this has essentially removed, removed seniority completely from, from that process as far as open positions for transfers. Right?
When it comes down to the application pools and setting up the interviews, yes.
So there's no, there's no preference for seniority, and in fact, there's no, there's no internal preference at all, not, not even in an early initial round or anything like that?
That's correct. The only thing I would say is that, what I've observed is that our principals do look very closely at the internal applicants, because they know our district, they are experienced, many of them have a very good track record. And there is a desire to take a good look and to talk to the internal applicants. This would allow, in all internal applicants, really, to vie for positions on an even plank field, because some of our less senior people wouldn't get an interview. And now, you know, if they put forward a good application, and they were experienced in certain areas, the principals could look at them. Right now, they have to look at the top five, and they can look at other candidates, but that's a lot of interviewing to do. So I think it would benefit many of our less senior, current employees.
So you also mentioned the idea that, especially if we're looking at a broad area, like fourth grade or something, that we could have candidates come in, we may not know what school yet, but we would be certain of having enough vacancies that we were to offer a candidate up, upplacement, which certainly makes sense. Couldn't the practice of offering upplacement allow us to go back and give some, some degree of preference to internal applicants as far as the where part? Once we know how many we're going to have, once we know that there's five externals, five internals are looking to move, we need eight, so we're
I think, you know, I think, I think that it could. So, for example, taking a look at special education, if Claudia knew that one of her educators wanted to move, and she had a placement, she had maybe two or three people that she had offered to be placed, I would think that, yes, there, the internal candidate could have the first say in where they would move to before we would then fill with an external. And, yes, I think that, I think that would work.
Okay. So would that be reflected in the handbook somehow?
It, it really is more of an operational practice. We actually do that right now. We, we ask our, you know, in the specialized areas, for example, in the school sites, Amy and Claudia ask them where would they like to be next year, if any change, and they say what they would like, and then they, and this has been going on for many years, they express an interest in making a change, and they do that. I think all of the special areas do operate that way. I think Barb does that as well, her areas, and takes individual preference into consideration. And then they look at what's, what remains and put that together. So it, it really wouldn't change the practice.
Because we do that before the process even opens up.
What, what it would change, though, is, I'm just thinking aloud about elementary education, let's just say we hired a pool of three elementary education teachers, the principals would, if, then, let's just say an opening came and had Bear, the principal would then look at the pool of three if they wanted to move to Bear, but they would also look at any internal people who wanted to move. And there would actually probably be a second interview, just to make sure there's a good match for Bear.
I, I guess the, the concern, the concern that I'm left with here is, you know, we're, we're in an environment where a few, a few years ago, you know, right, right down to how you would set up posting boards was a, a product of collective bargaining over many years. A system that has its strengths and has a few weaknesses, but it's, it was a known, it's a balanced system, and you had to go through a process to, to change it. And we don't have that anymore. So I just get a little bit concerned when we talk about, you know, something that's a, a good practice, like letting internals have a first look at where to move, which I'm confident that we're doing it. But it's, something is just a little bit less official about it when we're saying it's an operational practice instead of putting it in the handbook. And I'm not saying you have the answer right now about it, but the more, it really seems like every time you pull something out of writing and it becomes an understanding, it has the feeling, for me, of going from something that we are, although it's subject to change at the discretion of the board, it goes from, you know, here's a, here's a 35-page book of how we do things versus here's, here's 25, but really, we have a lot of good practices that we do. Because those, you know, those can be more about individuals, I guess, then. I look at the employee handbook as, to me, it's something on a similar, I look at it side-by-side with a policy book, I realize they're not the same thing, but I would look at them side-by-side. So if there was a way that we could talk more about, about some of those things, I think the more peace of mind we can give employees that many of the things that are not part of a contract language anymore, but are parts, are things that we've still done, that we would still do them. And I guess my other question is, and it's probably my last one, is, could we have, you know, is it, is it fair to at least say that a principal couldn't go all external if there were internal candidates? I mean, could we say that if there's, if there's internal and external candidates, and I realize this is a rare situation, could we at least say that the, the one most senior district candidate gets a, gets a shot?
I think we talked about that, and I think that that would be something that could be done, the, the most senior candidate would get an interview, provided they meet the, you know, the qualifications.
So that could go in as
We could, we, I would prefer to make it operational and just do, do that, but, you know, I guess I'd be open to other ideas and
Because everything we make, everything we make operational becomes, you know, kind of becomes a, a trust issue, and I have confidence that, that we'll do it, but people, people move, people change, and it's, I like to preserve some, I think more peace of mind is preserved when certain things are in writing, and I don't see what the harm is if, if something going in writing that we were going to do anyways. I mean, if the, if the most, if once in a while, the one most senior person probably isn't a fit, it doesn't seem like there's any huge harm in honoring a process when they could have any size interview panel of other people regardless of seniority inside and out. It just, the little bit of harm of maybe sometimes having to take a candidate that wasn't in your top four versus the appearance of getting rid of one more thing because of the, the interview of the top five first, that was a compromise between trying to bridge from an old system to a new system? I guess that's pretty much my two cents with that. Chris?
I, I don't know whether it helps, but even with the old contract, I put a book on it that, I mean, I bet on it, that there are a lot of deals cut outside the contract. In fact, I'm sure of it. So it's not like that contract was sacrosanct. Second, and again, I don't know whether it helps in language, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, to add a line in there that experienced internal teachers will be given due consideration prior to going to the outside or something like that with that. Would that sort of language help?
It, it would, except I think something very different is being proposed here.
Right. Well, senior give due consideration, I, I
Michelle?
One of the things that we really feel is something that every internal candidate should be a value add. In, in other words, if we are doing our jobs well and right, they should know the district, they should have a clear understanding of, of the Green Bay Public School students. So they should be going into, able to go into an interview and knock it out of the ballpark, because they already have inside knowledge. And that's the piece that, as we talk about it with the different groups, there is a, there is a coaching opportunity there that we could work collectively together. And Jean and I have talked about, to prepare our internal candidates, I think there's some concern, if I have to compete, will I be able to? And the reality is, I would say you absolutely should be able to, unless there's unique situations for certain specific jobs that I wouldn't qualify for. But if I'm going in, and I have been a very successful teacher in another school in the district, I can speak to all the value that I've brought to that position, and how I see I can fit very well, because I already know that school. And the reason I came to that school is because I know what I can do to support student learning in that school and be a value add to that staff. And those are the kinds of conversations that I really look at and say, if we do this well and right, we should want to keep every single employee that we have, and, and they should be a leg up on anybody that comes in from the outside unless there's a unique skill set that is coming in for a new position. So, I mean, I, I think it's a different way to look at it, but the reality is, we need to be able to put the very best in front of our kids. And I, and I'm confident that through educator effectiveness and, and in partnership with our teachers and our staff, we should be able to, to boost it up for everybody, so that anybody can compete with them, and should be able to be far ahead of somebody coming in with zero experience.
If, if they're granted an interview, that's, that's the whole thing here.
But their paperwork should be just glowing.
Should, should be.
Well, but that's part of this process.
Jean, would you talk a little bit more about the, the last paragraph on the, on the cover memo? Work with principal supervisors and members of the bargaining units on how the change will be communicated and implemented in a respectful manner. I think you're probably doing some of that already. How is that going to be done? And do you have a timetable for that?
I would, I would work with Lori Lakesley to communicate a change such as this. I, we have been talking with all of the unions, the leadership, however, I know that messages don't always get down to all of the staff. Plus, this would apply to people who are not members of any bargaining unit, and we have a number of those in place. I think that with, what I would like to do is have small group meetings for people to come in and listen to the change, as well as some electronic communication. Because I think that I've learned that two ways of communicating big, bigger changes is usually best. And that way, if somebody is more interested in learning the details face-to-face, they could do that. So if, if the board should vote the 15th of December, we would probably start messaging this after the first of the year, I would think, with the meetings and such, because I think right after the 15th, people would be kind of busy.
And how long do you anticipate that process taking?
I would think the messaging would go off, probably take a couple of weeks. I, I think even, even though we would send it an email communication, perhaps something in the staff school, and then have meetings with groups, we still will probably have people who are unfamiliar with the process. One of the things we do is, after the board votes on a handbook change, Randy sends out a communication through staff school, correct, and we've done those. And then we make the change in the handbook, and it's available on the district website, the change. So we would do that, same thing, plus meetings.
Okay. Katie?
Jean, approximately how many new hires do we have on an annual basis? And I know, just, it's a rough figure.
Several hundred, a lot. When you think about all of the new sub-teachers we hire and all of the employees we probably hire, 500 people a year, 400, 500, maybe.
So in my mind, this is really positioning us to get a jump on the pool
It is.
of new hires, that the, it's not really a disservice, intended to be a disservice to the people who are working in the district, because if we're hiring people on a, to be determined, in some cases, a to-be-determined assignment,
Mm-hmm.
it's not like they're taking something away from another person in the district who wants to work at a specific site, because it's, but it does give us the, the benefit of getting access to the pool sooner than later.
It would also enable, you know, if a principal is working with a limited-term teacher, or any employee for that matter, they would interview them along with all the other applicants. And I, but I would, I would predict that some of the limited-term employees we have would end up being offered positions, because they might already be in the school, they would have gone through the professional development with the school, they know the students, they know the families, and if they've been a good fit with the team, I would anticipate that they would likely be, get jobs. And we lose them now, many of them, because they, they can't wait around. And I know others have had experience where they have lost, lost LTEs. But, but the, but the thing is, is everybody has a job, you know, we're, we're, everybody has a job, we're making sure that before we go to interview externally or offer any LTE positions, all of our employees who might be displaced because of a shifting enrollment will have a position.
Will have a position before this opens up.
Right. And they can still move around. So if they didn't get the position they wanted and something else comes available, they, they can still move around and, and shift. If they want to take a position at a school, they can do that. And they, I would want to give them an interview, they would, because they've been displaced.
Okay. But I do agree with you in terms of the certain internal advantages, but also the making certain, we are making coaching services available to people, and that we, it's, it all goes back to the support-first philosophy that we have.
I, I did offer, to offer a class on interviewing and resume preparation to the, through the GBA if they want to meet it.
Chris?
Couple things, if I may, I'll come back to that last point over here. First, if I heard you write, if we're talking about teachers, 400 to 500 teachers a year you hire?
No, employees, all, all.
Employees.
That would include any of the coaches that we bring on board and substitute teachers, which we're continuing to interview and hire.
You wouldn't know offhand how many positions total. And what I'm getting at, I'm just, now I'm starting to get a little concerned about turnover. If that was just teachers, we're looking at 25% turnover itself, which would be a whole nother issue to explore.
Teachers, no, I
Perhaps another
My question was all staff, not just teachers.
Yes, it's a, there's, there's a, and it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we might lose a coach, and then our activities director finds another coach, and they're considered an employee, and they're brought on board, and that would be anybody who might come in and help direct a play, but they get paid, so they come through our, our employment process.
The second point, I agree with Dr. Langenfeld's comments, with the premise, though, that to the degree interviewing is an art, and people who have not been in that process in a while can sometimes get lost in it or not know how, how to do it well. And I realize, we talked about coaching staff to do that. I, I'm not fully sure that's our responsibility to coach staff to apply for their positions within the district, but it seems to me it's something the GPA might think about doing, because one can argue they are always looking for things to support their membership. And that might be a very viable service they could provide. could provide.
Who knows? I guess I, I just want to say, I think it's, you know, it doesn't sound like any, it would probably almost ever happen that a principal wouldn't wish to interview at least the top internal candidate, I would think, setting aside all of the internal candidates and picking an all, requesting an all-external slate when there's internal applicants would probably be almost unheard of. I think the, I think what it would do for staff morale to say that, you know, as a nod to years of service, that at least the one, one most senior district person at a minimum will be interviewed, and you can't do an all-external slate, I think that just sends the right message, and in the rare case, if all the good candidates for a slot were all from the externals, no real, no real harm is done by requesting one extra interview on those rare occasions, and I think, for me to be, you know, this is, this seems incremental, but in fact, it's very large change, I mean, keeping, keeping seniority as the, the driving for reduction in workforce is very important, it's the most important thing, but I could see from the perspective of if I was in a bargaining unit, that, you know, okay, arena staffing is, arena staffing was gone, but we're going to be interviewing from within the first five, where if I were a senior employee, I would feel pretty comfortable, but then, I would see that being, I would see that being gone now and being, having no preference points, if you will, I think, I think it would be only fair to do at least, at least that, and I would probably need to, probably need to see that in a, in a proposal for me to be able to support it personally.
One of the things I, I did, I believe it was two years ago now, brought the process document to the board for review, it was a part of discussion, it was not voted on, but I, I don't know if it would be helpful for that, now that, that has to be rewritten, to bring that forward with that, and that actually is how we operationalized the employment practice, and I could bring that to the board in January for you to see what we're going to do, and that is what I share with all of the principals and building leaders as to how the employment process, and it's got to time when I will, will unfold.
Well, I guess what, what I would say about that, though, and this is not something I say very often, because it usually doesn't, usually isn't something I worry about too much, but that would be a case where I would maybe wonder if we were crossing the operations line, yet I think it's legitimate, a legitimate governance question to say that some, some recognition will be given to the most senior employees in the interview process officially, and I don't, I guess, I don't necessarily want to add to the list of documents that we vote on, or start voting on documents that we normally wouldn't have voted on. What is the, what's the legal significance of that, Melissa? If we, is there, like, is the, this operations manual, is that a legal document after the board has discussed if there's a, I, I just don't understand if we're, if we're making anything official by putting it in the process handbook, or if we're not making something official by it just going in the process handbook?
The process, the process handbook, that Human Resources uses to operationalize the handbook language?
Yes. Is that, I mean, is that...
Well, I think that's the difference between the board's governance functions and the administration's management and administrative functions, and the board votes on the policy, and we have a policy which says that we'll have a handbook, and the handbook is adopted by the board, and then there has to be something that operationalizes that handbook, and that's what Human Resources does, does to operationalize the language you've approved.
Okay, so it's not, it really isn't reflecting anything officially if we merely discuss...
We're not voting on it, that would just be for information purposes.
Right, and then, I guess I wouldn't be able to be okay with that, because we would not have made official in any way the, the procedure of guaranteeing that the one most senior district employee gets an interview. If we're told verbally that that's going to go into operations, I have no doubt that it will by, by this HR department this month of this year, but I don't feel that, I would not be able to go tell someone, you know, I acted, I acted to make, because I think it's important that the one most senior person always gets an interview. So, I would rather see it in the handbook than go into the technicalities of the operations manual. I guess I don't even see where there would be much room for concern if it's so rare that we would ever even think about not giving it, and that the, the maximum downside here is someone having to give one interview that maybe they wouldn't have preferred to give on rare occasion.
Well, I, I have to go back to language about internal staff being given due consideration, I mean, that is, one could argue it's a little wishy-washy, but it's still in there to remind people that we do give due consideration to our people. The idea of, of just the most senior being looked at, not others in there, not given due consideration to them, I have a little bit of concern with, because I, I've seen before where people are duly certified, and they're, they're taught in one of, one of those certification areas for 15 years plus, all of a sudden, they decide they want to jump over to their other area certification, they haven't been in that area in the last 15-plus years, they're not up to date with it at all, and they may be the most senior person. So, I'm not sure, I, if I were given due consideration to internal staff, that one probably went behind my list, even though they're maybe first-in-line seniority, I'd be looking at some other people who had been in that subject area.
You can take as many people as you want, internal or external, right? We're just, we're saying that one person in the pool would be guaranteed to have a I just don't see a, I just fail to see a, a downside to this, other than the wasted time of an interview for that once in a while, where the principal may know that the one most senior person applying to transfer is not it for their building, and is so sure of it that they wouldn't even be in the five or six in the pool, for those rare times, I think far more harm is done by taking the last recognition of district seniority away from the transfer process than having that rare extra interview happen sometimes.
I, I could be more sympathetic to your point, Mr. Becker, if I find out that during the interview process, our internal people have not been interviewed, and I haven't heard of that so far, I'm hearing that they have been and are being interviewed, and it doesn't, and for me at least, doesn't have to be the most senior, but it has to be our internal people.
I think we, I think we want a culture where, where our internal applicants are given a fair consideration, and that I would not consider it good management practice to simply shun a pool of internal candidates only to hire and look at external candidates, because that's not good hiring practice, and it doesn't allow you to really have that pool of candidates, both internal and external, who you really want to talk to before you make a hiring decision. And, I mean, we, we will monitor that, and the, the principal wants to have the best candidate, and why would you overlook a pool of three or four people who've been working for the district, who know the district? If, if that happened and a supervisor made that decision, I would question their, their rationale, and we do question the thinking on certain decisions, and that's part of what HR does, and it's not just one part of the job, but you do this, because you want to make sure they're looking at a good pool of candidates, and that's why we don't want to set a minimum, but, you know, if you have five applicants, you should be calling, you know, three candidates in if they don't meet the minimum qualifications, because two is not a pool. Now, there's sometimes a new interview tool, because others are not qualified, and sometimes people do apply for jobs and they don't meet the minimum qualifications, and they, you know, they do throw their hat in the ring, but we're saying, we want to hire, we want, we want a pool of candidates, which is to not, in my mind, if somebody said, how many? Is that that, three or more?
Well, I said, you know, if it's, I, I still don't see the resistance to putting that very limited, that very limited guarantee into the employee handbook, but we don't need to go around and around about it, I, I mean, I'll, I'll, I won't be able to vote for it if it comes without that in the handbook, but at the same time, I don't need to, I don't feel any need to try to dictate what goes into the policies, you know, it's a, it's a philosophical point that I think is important and reflects something that would be very rare that we wouldn't do anyways, so. Anything else? All right, and that was, that was the only item on the organizational support work session, so that concludes the report.